Just let me, where do you set that down? Tell me you're ready. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you're here this evening. This is the Planning Board's October 20th meeting for the month of October. And we're going to call the board to order at this time and start on our agenda. The agenda is before us, and I just want to start out with two public hearings. And the two public hearings, the first one we're going to hear, if there's anyone here to speak, we have a public hearing number one, which is a site plan review for Helen Boucher at 100 Weeks Road, map R13, lot 39, turn basement into duplex, which is adding two bedrooms to her property, which is inside the walls. And the floor at this time is open for anyone who'd like to speak about this site plan review for 100 Weeks Road. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward. Is this on? Identify yourself and please speak right up, sir.
I will. I'm Tom Lindstedt, and I'm the abutter on three sides of Helen's property.
Okay.
My issue is soil erosion.
Okay.
Okay. There's on the, I believe it's the southeast corner.
Yes, sir.
I sent a note to you folks to take a look at that. DEP has been involved, if you checked with Jesse, since June of this year on this issue.
Right.
It is still not resolved.
Okay. We'll have to check with the CEO on that and see what the status on that is.
DEP requested, I spoke with Anna Smith from DEP. She's been the most recent person there, and she requested a silt barrier under the rocks. And there are rocks galore on the edge. But there's, if you've been over there, you've seen the trench down that, it's probably an eight-foot banking. One of the issues I have with the runoff over that banking, if you look at my property, it drops down probably a foot for every two feet length. So if you go out 20 feet, you're down a good eight feet.
It drops that much?
It drops that much.
Okay.
And if you question, I have some pictures. I tried to print them off, but they don't work.
Okay. All right.
But that's, that's my concern. Jesse's been made aware of this, and he's been there with DEP.
We need to, as soon as he steps in, we'll ask him that question. So he can update us too for if he's, what DEP has told him or discussed with him. I'm not sure at this time, because that's an aspect for the CEO to handle, not this planning board. It's not for us.
Okay.
All right? So we'll ask him at this time, whenever he gets seated and relaxes a little bit.
I would like to point out.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, there was only two members of the board on the sidewalk.
Which is just fine.
At no.
It is too. I found out.
Every, a sidewalk constitutes a meeting.
No.
So we need a quorum. For any, for any time when we were supposed to be having a meeting, which a sidewalk constitutes a meeting, we have to take minutes.
But.
So there was only two of us there.
Anybody can show up, it can be one person at a sidewalk.
I, I told you this.
Because it's not really a meeting.
You can't, how can you have the board making a decision when one person shows up on the sidewalk?
Because we would ask that.
When you have a quorum, people, people aren't even going to, people on the board are going to vote based on something they didn't say?
We would ask that individual, Gerard, to give us a report.
I have a real problem with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That's okay. I understand that.
That goes against everything that's been being done in this town for decades.
From, uh, uh.
You can't have one person going on a sidewalk.
Right. From other people's.
What is the point of one person showing up on a sidewalk?
I understand.
Do you realize that's extraneous? You're asking the board to meet, that violates MMA guidelines. You're asking the board, one person to meet with an applicant?
We did not.
That violates every principle of MMA rule.
Okay, I, what I find in the book.
You can't have a conversation with them without the rest of you being there.
What I find.
I stayed in my car until the board showed up, and it was only that.
What I find in the book is not state that, Jess, Clifford, I mean Gerard.
Go to the MMA.
We'll ask them, we'll ask them to clarify.
Go to the MMA manual, because it's really clear, we can't be having sidewalks where, you know, it's applicable for one or two people to show up.
Right.
And then make a determination. That's, if we start setting that precedent, we're going down a bad road, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your input.
Because what this gentleman's pointing out, me and Aaron did see the steep drop-off.
Right.
There's only two of us that were there.
Okay.
So the rest of the board can't understand what an abutter's saying or what any situation, if they're not on a sidewalk. So it's really, it goes against MMA guidelines, and it's not being fair to either the applicant or the abutters, in my opinion.
Okay. Desiree, would you send an email to MMA to clarify how many people of a board membership shall, I'll use the word, shall or must be on a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Can it be one of five, two of five, or do we need a majority there of the five members of the board?
Can I read the Planning Board MMA manual and see if that helps?
Yes.
So I searched the Planning Board MMA manual for sidewalk.
Yes.
Page 182 of the manual says sidewalk. Sidewalk meetings can be called by the chairman or majority of the board. The purpose of allowing the board and interest of the public to inspect the site of attending proposal. Sidewalks are encouraged for all applications before the board. The vice chairman is responsible for minutes of sidewalks. To ensure full transparency, board actions to honor the public, local motions shall be made and our votes taken at a sidewalk. Whenever possible, the planning board's sidewalks shall be stopped following adjournment of meeting. Public motion given at all sidewalks. I'm more than happy to send something, I just, it's very ambiguous.
It is very ambiguous.
How immediately adjourn the meeting when we only don't have a quorum?
Right. I understand what you're saying, but.
A meeting is a meeting, and you need a quorum.
Gerard, we're not.
You can't adjourn the meeting when you don't have a quorum.
We're going to ask MMA to clarify that. Would you do that, Desiree? Because my understanding, there's been sidewalks before with less than three members of this board present.
I've never seen one.
Okay. I'm just telling you what I've been doing for.
I've been involved on that side of this board for years.
Okay. All right. We'll ask MMA to clarify that for us. Okay, Desiree?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that very much. And we do take your point to interest, very much so. CEO, the man just spoke about the erosion and said DEP has been involved in the abutter's property where that erosion presently exists. Have you spoken to DEP about that, or is they, have they got back with you on their opinion on it?
We walked around the property, and they, they said the only phone they could see was, you know, the dirt, they didn't have hay on it, there wasn't any nets to keep it from going onto the neighbor's property.
Right.
They've done that, they took pictures of the hay, and sent it to me.
Okay.
That's what we were speaking about.
So what the DEP is saying, oh, they wanted some hay put down to control the erosion, and that was it?
That's it.
Okay. I wanted to hear this.
Right. And when we did the sidewalk last Saturday, they saw the slope, and they agreed that it is well-stabilized, grown grass, your board members.
And the only thing I have issue with is that I did mention hay, and there were no bales of hay on the property.
It don't, did it say bales? Does it require bales? Or did it just call hay or straw?
Hay.
Hay. Did it say bales?
Not baled in the way.
Okay. You mean on, like, on the surface of the slope?
Well, like in any of these situations, and it's been violated all over town. You're supposed to have riprap by the streams, you're supposed to have bales, so this way all the silt doesn't go into it.
That's not what DEP told you?
No, what I'm saying is, is our ordinance is clear, the law is clear, you're supposed to have either riprap, if you're doing, you know, developing, you're supposed to have bales, so this way if there's any storm on it, it blocks it.
Okay. That's not what DEP is asking us for, or advising the CEO about.
Well, they just said the advisement was bales and hay.
No, that's not what he's saying they asked.
On the surface. Oh, okay. I thought it was bales and hay.
No.
When you put seed, you put hand over it.
It's just on the surface?
I see. I see. That's different.
Okay. Anyone else?
It requires literally bales and hay.
I understand if you're developing and you're moving dirt and all that, but that's not what this is about.
Right, right.
Okay?
Right.
Anyone else that'd like to speak to this, on this public hearing this time, on 100 Weeks Road?
I did, I followed through with Ann. We met, we walked.
Would you please come up? I hate to ask you to do that, Helen, but it would be nice.
The lady met with Helen, and she.
Yeah, Ann Flanagan, was that her last name? Yeah, we met, we walked the property, and she.
Who's Helen?
I'm Helen.
Oh, okay, Helen. You met with who?
No, Ann Flanagan.
Ann Flanagan's the DEP person that walked.
Okay, you wanted to meet with her?
Yes.
Okay. And what, what was your feedback from Ann?
She liked the way it was stabilized. She liked the fact that we put down the oats first, so that it sprouted in less than two days, and stabilized the bank, then we put the real grass down, well, we had done it all at the same time, but it takes, you know, quite a while for real grass to come up.
Absolutely, yes.
She was happy to see that the oats were.
Good.
So she wants to see what it looks like completed.
Okay.
So we're going to follow through, we're just waiting for this to go through, so we can fix the leach field, so we can finish it, so she can see the end product. So that's all she cares about, sees what the end product is.
Well, anyone else? Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak to this property at 100 Weeks Road? Anybody here?
Well, the only question I have, Mr. Chairman, is again, going through the ordinance, I'm confused because they need a variance from DHS and state, because of the fact that if you've been out of the site, the well doesn't need the setback from our, it doesn't meet our requirements, either state or local requirements for the setback. So they need a variance. And where I'm confused, and where maybe we can get some MMA guidance, which is important, is if you read the ordinance, only the ZBA can give a variance.
That's correct. We're coming to that.
So the thing is, is are we wasting their time and our time, when all they need to do is go before the ZBA and file, and the ZBA will give them a variance?
I'm coming to that. Okay. I, you jumped ahead of me. But that's okay. That's fine. That's good. Because I was going to bring up, after discussions, and what's been brought to our attention. We, not necessarily, not everybody on the board, but some of us, when we read table on page 20, table two, if you guys want to turn there in your book, please, when we read that, it tells us the amount of acreage you've got to have with water and all that. And some of us have read it, we've read it many times, and we found some footnotes that we thought allowed us to make a, not a variance, because it don't tell me that. Planning Board may reduce lot size and frontage requirements on footnote four, which we are authorized to do that, but here's the kicker, you've got to read that, you've got to read the table in detail. So when I went back up, you go to the very first line up of our board members, and you read land use districts, dimensions, C notes. C notes. In Village, you got, you can do one and four. In Village Residential, you can do four. But in rural, none of these notes apply. None of them. And that's where this property's at. We cannot give you a lot reduction size and frontage, and Gerard is correct. The only people that can do this for you is a zoning board, Board of Appeals. They can give you a variance where we can't. Because the way this is written then, is you cannot, we cannot approve your application at this time unless you increase your lot size or get a variance from the Board of Appeals. Is it the Board of Appeals?
I don't, yeah, the ZBA.
The ZBA.
I think the ZBA would have no issue with this.
Right. They're not going to have an issue with it?
I don't think the ZBA.
Okay. But I wanted to clarify what we thought we could do and what we can not do in rural.
Right. It frightens me, because, you know, when you hear variance, that's not something that's.
We can't do.
That means that we're going against our own ordinance.
Right.
And the appeals board is, they can supersede us.
Right.
They're the ones that can issue the variances and say, listen, you don't meet requirements, but we'll, we'll waive it.
But what we're saying though, Gerard, if you read number item, footnote number four, we can do it in two zones.
Right.
The planning board can.
Right.
But we can't do it in rural.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. We cannot adjust your lot size for you. It's by the book, we're stuck. We have to follow the book.
Well, that's when I heard variance, that's when it rang off to me, because I thought we'd be doing a disservice to them and ourselves.
Right.
Because it wouldn't be legal.
Right.
And I, I think the ZBA, this is not a, I don't think this would be a huge issue for the ZBA.
I don't think it would either. But we just need to let them know after hearing this, and hear the other concerns that the abutter had. Anyone else got anything to bring up at this time about 100 Weeks Road in this public hearing? Anybody else on the board besides Gerard?
Do an olive branch, is there some way the neighbors can work out together where they're happy?
I would hope so.
You know, where the neighbors work together.
And they're trying to, they're trying to meet your concern, it sounded like, and I hope everything works out for the abutters, as well as for the property owners. That's what our hope is. Yep.
But we really didn't, I feel we don't have the authority to do this.
Well, I agree. Yeah, we have, after I reread it again for about the 15th time, 20th time, I got it. Yeah. Okay. If there's no other questions about 100, huh? What's that?
Do we have the dimensions of the proposed driveway for the lower level?
I don't think so.
Because that's on our checklist.
That's not on it. I don't think they're, they're not changing the driveway. I don't think.
Is it, you're using an existing driveway? Aren't you adding another driveway for your lower level?
Yeah, when they did the walk.
Yeah.
Last Saturday, or whatever Saturday it was, I showed them where the turnaround is going to be.
Yeah.
And they were all set.
I saw it all on your sheet, but on our, on our checklist, it calls for us to have the dimensions of it.
Yeah.
And I did, I, maybe I missed it, Helen, I, if I did. I'm just trying to cover anything, so when you guys come back on the Board of Appeals.
It's going to be good.
Okay. And you guys two guys saw it where they was going to do that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no other questions at this time about this public hearing, we'd like to close the public hearing on 100 Weeks Road. Huh? Yeah. And I need a motion.
Yeah, I saw the motion.
I need a motion from the board to close the public hearing for 100 Weeks Road?
Sub move.
Who's second? Saban's seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing at this time? Show your right hand, please. Unanimous. Okay. Public hearing's closed for 100 Weeks Road. Okay. We're going to get into the very next one.
Should we, are we going to talk about anything else without that?
No.
Okay.
Without the ZBA variance activity.
Without a variance, we can't do nothing. But we have to disapprove it. But what we're going to do is table it for now, I think, when we get to it.
Okay.
Okay? We'll have to table it until we hear back from the ZBA. So we can't give variances.
No. Don't mind me, I'm just sitting back here, and I'm taking it all in.
Okay. We're going to, at this time, we're going to open a public hearing up for hearing number two, site plan review for Tammy Hansen at 728 North Road, map R08, lot 14, there's a proposed licensed daycare preschool. In order, and we think we have all the information we need on this, because you, they have submitted an additional package, we asked for the additional information from them, and two sketches and everything. So this public hearing is open at this time. I think I can open the public hearing without a motion from the board, can I? Huh?
Yes.
Okay. So if anybody has anything to question or say about 728 North Road for the proposed licensed daycare and preschool, please come forward and up to the mic, identify yourself, and speak on what your concerns may be.
My name is Jeff Wright, 706 North Road, Carson Field.
Yes, sir.
And I was just wondering, I think I put up like a fence to, so the sign doesn't travel down the road from a daycare.
I, we don't know how kind of fence they're going to put up for sure.
Okay.
It's up to them, but.
I was just asking.
Yeah. They're, we didn't, the property, we was looking for your property, everything seems to be buffered by trees and vegetation on three sides really well. It's just not buffered on the street side. And that noise coming from the street, there's noise coming from the street, which will probably be greater than the noise from the daycare. But.
When the, before the, when they sold the house, there used to be a whole section between the house and the garage. And when that was taken out, there was.
There's still some of that wooden fence there, I think.
No, this is a whole, when they redid the whole structure on the corner.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Budget there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Took out the whole center of it.
Yeah.
So you couldn't even see each other's property. Now you can see each other's property.
Yeah, you can.
Because the house is, most of the house is home.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying.
Disconcerned.
Yes. And when you have kids, you can totally be quiet.
Right.
Run into daycare.
Yeah, that's true.
Stay at fun.
Yes. Anything from the board? Any questions from the board?
Well, the two things in the ordinance, one that was important that I didn't ask about, that's on page 22, is, says for any use area presenting a potential safety hazard to children, physical screening or other barriers sufficient to deter small children from entering the hazardous area must be provided and maintained in good condition. Now, I noticed on their site plan, you have an area where you're going to fence in, in the back. Is that correct?
Yes.
Where the kids will, so there's be nobody that can get onto the road?
No.
Or get off that area? Because that, from a safety's perspective, that's in the ordinance, and that was concerning to me, because if we passed this and some poor kid got hit, you know, and.
Yeah, no. They won't have access to it.
So that's great, because I noticed that you put in the back that you're going to be screening. The other thing is, it does mention noise abatement. It says, it mentions excessive noise, enemies must be muffled, so it's not to be objectable due to intimate beat frequency, shrillness or volume. So it is in our ordinance about noise, and I understand about noise, because I've had to deal with it myself, with the ordinance not being followed. I go out of my mind with it, but maybe, you know, to, to make everyone happy, you know, a little noise barrier or something, you know? You know, even a little, just a bit of fencing, a tiny even bit of it, you'd be surprised what, you know, a little barrier can do.
Is there is fencing on their sketch map they sent today? There is fencing on the sketch map they sent today.
Yeah. That drawing they gave us, or did you re?
Oh, in the back.
Yeah.
Which is where the children.
Oh, yeah. So the whole, that whole back's going to be fenced in.
Correct.
Oh, okay. All right. Then that, then, there you go. Then that'll, that'll block the sound, and that'll deal with number C. Because it's number C on 22 and number K on number 23. So where was that?
Gerard, that is also at unreasonable hours, too.
Yeah, you're right.
And I think you're not going to be operating a daycare at midnight.
They're not going to be doing that, that's at unreasonable hours.
Yeah.
I was going to bring that up. Thank you.
Now, you did say that it was already inspected by the fire marshal. So that's all been covered. And the states.
Other Monday.
And I did the math on the septic. That was an important thing. I don't know if you guys noticed it, the math for the septic we were looking for?
Yeah.
That checked out.
Yep.
Yeah, in the package you sent.
Yes. So should we close the public meetings, we can move on to?
So I'm glad to see that you put the fencing in the back there. I didn't realize initially that you guys were going to do that. You were going to fence in the backyard.
Is there any other comments from anybody on this public hearing? Anyone would like to bring anything up? Any other board member, please?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second? Second? All in favor of closing the public hearing at this time? Show a right hand. I can't see you. Okay. Unanimous? Okay. We're through with our public hearings at this time? Okay, correspondence. We have some correspondence. I don't know if we need to read that or not.
Please, please, you have to read it in your record. You have multiple emails from attorney paper and attorney silk.
Yes.
About Mr. Rose's case. There's.
That's right. Hold on just a minute. We're still in recess. We've got to call our regular meeting to order before we start, I'm sorry.
You close the public hearing?
No, close the public hearing, now we've got to open the board meeting. Okay. Let's, let's have a motion to open our regular board meeting at this time at 6:30. By Saban, who seconds? Aaron's second. All in favor of a regular board meeting at this time? Show a right hand. Unanimous. We're all right, we're in regular session at this time.
So you have multiple emails from the attorney's for Rose's case. You had emails from TMB for her case for the daycare.
Yes.
You got all those.
Yes.
Um, you have the email for MMA for the initial requirements.
Yes, for Patco, yes.
Um, and then you have, um, the minutes from the sidewalk, the notes for the sidewalk from last weekend.
This weekend are from, uh, from, they're from Aaron? Where did I put those?
I did receive, uh, I forwarded an email from attorney before the back and forth between the attorneys. Um, it was a packet probably from that thick.
It is.
It's in the file, I didn't print it out, if you guys wanna look at it in, in card copy.
Yeah, that's right. It's probably about this thick here.
Yeah.
Yes, and I've read it two or three times. Everybody needs a copy of that, you need to have that. If, uh, if you don't have a copy, please let Desiree know. There's a lot of information in there between the two law, law firms about the Monroe, uh, application at this time. Does everybody have a copy of that big thick package?
I got, not a physical copy of it.
I, I printed it out, but they only sent me one, so I didn't read parts.
Except me, I have it.
And you do.
Okay.
And he has a copy.
I think it...
He printed it. Does anyone else need a copy of that printed?
I, I'd like a copy.
Okay, would you get Gerard a copy of that, please?
Yes.
Cause I can't stand looking at the...
Okay. Okay, so that kinda, does that bring us up on the speed to the correspondence that you know at this time?
I'm pretty sure that's everything.
Okay. Okay, I think, yeah, that's...
Oh, I guess one more, you got the decision letter from the ZBAA field for Mr. Rose, or Mr. Melvin back...
Who remanded it back to us?
Yes.
Yes, I, we, I have that. I hope the rest of you have that also. It's been remanded back to the planning board, but that, we'll have to, uh, discuss that when we get to that, that section. Okay. Now then, let me go on down here. Review of minutes for September the 15th. Does everybody got a copy of September the 15th minutes? Cause there may be some typo errors in there or something you may find that you got questions about.
Yeah, I found, uh, just two things. Uh, page two, the bottom. Saban made a motion to hold the public hearing. Uh, no second listed, so I don't know.
Who seconded, you know?
Was that, is the guard's chair?
Yeah.
Sir?
No, on the second page.
Okay.
I figure we could just either look at the notes, sir, check the video.
Uh, Aaron expected it all to be...
It was me.
Yeah, it was me. Can we make that, uh, changes, corrections, please?
Yes, it was you.
Okay. Okay.
And then on the very last page, Mr. Savon Beckwith.
I go by that.
When did you become a Savon?
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
Yeah.
Hey, I've been called a lot worse in this room.
But that was it, meant to leave you.
I will correct those.
There's one other one that Saban has too, though.
Actually, um, it was on the, just while we're reviewing that, the sidewalk minutes.
What?
The sidewalk minutes.
Yes.
Um, septic has been reviewed by CEO Stacy, so that needs to be changed to CEO Winters.
CEO.
That was me.
Aaron, yeah.
That was my...
Okay.
Thanks for mentioning about the sidewalk.
Yes, sidewalk, yeah.
Wrong guess.
So did you want to approve the sidewalk minutes with the amendments?
With the amendments that, uh...
As well as the 9th September, if you need, next November.
I'd like to approve. I make a motion to approve with an amendment.
Second. Aaron seconds, all in favor, please show a right hand. All, all approve, one hundred. Okay, old business. Whenever you, are you caught up yet, Des?
Uh, you go right ahead.
Go right ahead, huh? Site plan review, Helen Boucher, one of the weeks road, map R19 lot 39, turn basement to duplex, two bedrooms. We're gonna have to table this at this time. It's gotta be tabled because of, uh, some, uh, we asked them to go to the ZBA to get up, to obtain a variance for their lot size. And till they come back from the ZBA, we cannot, uh, let, uh, go forward on any action on this, either approve or disapprove. We need to wait on ZBA's, uh, decision. How's the board with that? Is any other question about that? What we're trying to do, just table it? Okay. Do, uh, do I have a motion to table at this time? Saban, second? Aaron? All approve, raise your right hand? Okay, that's, that's tabled at this time. Okay, item B. Site plan review, Tammy Hanson, 728 North Road, map ROA lot O14, proposed licensed daycare preschool. Any discussions or any motions from the board at this time? Anything from the board?
I think after receiving her package today, that it's complete and...
You feel safe with it?
I feel safe, Gerard, you?
Yeah, and as long as they, they definitely have the requirement of the fencing.
Right, right.
Get the safety for the children and the noise barrier.
Right.
That, that I think will cover two issues.
Two birds.
It'll cover the protection of the kids and it'll block some of the noise from the rain.
Yeah, anybody, anybody else?
I make a motion to approve it as complete.
Agree with this, it's just as complete?
Yeah, that's why I said first.
Yes. Saban makes a motion to re, to approve the application as complete, I have a second for that?
Second.
Aaron? All in favor, show a right hand, please, unanimous?
You guys have been great.
Now we've done the sidewalk.
Now, we've done the sidewalk, we've done the public hearing, we've done both.
Thank you.
No, we're not done yet. Okay. Do I have a motion from the board to approve the application as submitted? So moved, Aaron, Aaron's, uh...
Yes, with conditions and...
Okay, with the conditions about the fence.
And...
Yes.
And the barrier.
And the barrier.
Agreed on that.
Okay, so it's been, uh, you make a mo, uh, not a motion, but a, uh, amendment, amendment from Gerard.
To include that the, there's a guarantee that there will be the fencing for the safety and also for the noise abatement. And, um, and that that will be guaranteed.
Okay.
I mean, there's never fences, but what do you mean about noise, I mean...
Well, the fencing around the children blocks the noise.
Yeah, I, I have to put a fence up.
I'm totally gonna be walking, it's not gonna be a...
I can't have them running everywhere.
Again, the noise reference, um, did say at unreasonable hours.
At unreasonable hours, so if you're gonna have kids there during the day mainly?
Yeah.
Okay, what is it gonna be?
Five thirty.
Okay, you're to five thirty? So that's not unreasonable hours? Uh, the way, the way some of us see it.
I think the amendment, Gerard, in respect to that, should just include the fence, not the noise, because...
Well, in the, in the ordinance, what I mean the fencing is...
For the safety of the kids.
The safety of the kids, but if you put a couple extra feet, it blocks the noise, everyone's happy. It's not, it's not a tough, you know...
Except for me, that couple extra feet is what I fucking make the money.
No, I, I agree with you. It's just, it's just work, it's just, uh, it's just working, it just, you know...
We got a wood line between that and all of the other properties, we have a rock wall, we have elevator down below the level of any other, you know? We get plenty of bear in that.
Okay.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, hopefully both.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this with the amendment only.
Okay, we have to vote on his amendment first.
Okay.
You cannot have another amendment on the floor.
There's definitely a fence.
Do, sir?
That there's definitely some type of fencing.
Okay, you gonna modify your amendment then? I mean, your amendment?
Right, because I wanna guarantee that there's gonna be fencing.
Oh, that's what you want?
Right.
Okay, if he's gonna modify his amendment to guarantee fencing only for control of the children, that makes sense absolutely 100%. So we need to vote on Gerard's amendment first. You can't have two amendments on the floor at one time.
No.
Okay, anybody in favor of Gerard's amendment as he stated, just for the fence to control the children only at this time? Okay, wait a minute. You motioned it? You seconded?
I motioned, he seconded.
He seconded. Yes, ma'am?
He could just, um, retract his, his first amendment.
And make it a new one? Okay.
That way, that way, we're not...
I was assuming originally when they meant fencing, they were gonna be putting in like a six foot fence. I didn't realize it was gonna be a four foot.
Right.
I thought it was gonna take care of both the noise abatement and the...
No.
And the other issue.
No.
So I thought it was kind of a, a win-win situation for both parties.
Okay. So are, you're asking, we can, what'd you say?
But as long as there's fencing guaranteed there for the safety of the children.
What did you say to have him to...
So if you can, um, retract your first amendment for the fencing and noise, or safety noise, and put work amendment for the stuff there in the back.
There's a fence there for control of the children.
It's a part of the ordinance, it's necessary that they, they be blocked from being able to get out and get out on the road or be able to...
State won't give her a license without a fence anyway.
Right, right.
And she's got a fence on the plan, so...
Okay.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Can you, uh, you wanna, uh, when you say, you wanna retract your amendment, the, it's up to you, Gerard.
No, I just wanted to, I just wanna make sure the fencing is done.
Okay.
We have an issue where things get voted on and then sometimes they don't get done.
I understand.
And no disrespect to the applicants, but the point is, is I just wanna make sure, I, I don't wanna live with my conscience of...
I understand.
Some kid got hit because there wasn't a fence put in and then the next thing you know, it's like, because it wasn't enforced, you, you know, I have an issue.
Can I just speak for a second?
You know?
Cause it's, it's me that's in charge of all these little kids' lives, like, it's on me, not you.
No, I get that.
It's, so I will not put them in danger, the fence is gonna go up. I'm waiting for my inspector to come to tell me exactly what we need. It's coming Monday, we are putting the fence up.
Great, cause that, that's, it's in the ordinance and that's my biggest fear is that you have a little child and they just happen to wander off, the next thing you know, they could be on 160 in the morning.
Okay.
I'm aware.
We still, we're still hung up on the amendment right now, the way it's written, the way it's spoken.
Well, why don't we just leave it as the board just requires that they have fencing put in, you see?
So you gotta retract your...
You gotta retract your original amendment.
Actually, I'll retract the original amendment, we have the board just made the requirement and that they, that the, the, uh, fencing is necessary.
Right, required by our ordinance.
Right.
Okay. Can we have a motion on that, please?
I amend my original motion to include the fence that's compliant with the ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion, Saban motion, second. Gerard seconds, all in favor, show of hands, please. Okay, that's done. Now then, we're down to see if we're gonna approve the application as submitted. That's the final action for us for this, for this, uh, 728 North Road. No, I'm sorry, yeah, 728 North Road.
I will make that motion.
You're making a motion to approve the application?
Second.
As submitted, second by Aaron.
Yep.
With the amendments, I say, with the amendments, too.
I make the motion with the amendments, sorry.
With the amendment.
I also second with the amendments.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, show your right hand, please. Unanimous? We're done with that one.
Now you're all.
Now you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. As soon as they are... Jesse's free, we'll get started on the next one. Yeah, this is Patco Construction on Federal Road. Don't wanna get ahead of herself too much. We did not put that. We have a clarification, there it is. Clarification from the MMA.
Yep.
We do have that. Does everybody have that clarification from MMA? Which is very good, they, they really hit that nail on the heads. I hope everyone's read that about, for about this site.
Yep.
Oh, I definitely read it, yeah. Said what I thought it did.
Okay. We'll move on then to the next, uh, item under, uh, old business, which is site plan review, item number C, Patco Construction, 227 and 229 Federal Road, map UO1 lot 001, expansion of existing facility and add new building. We had asked our, um, our great assistant...
Our visiting assistant.
Assistant, uh, uh, administrative assistant, she's not in here right now. She went and, uh, sent this, uh, yeah, this, uh, email to MMA about the size and dimensions of buildings on this property. What I thought, when I read it, is exactly what they said when they sent us the clarification. But we needed to have it clarified, just to be safe. So, uh, is any questions for the board over the clarification from MMA?
Loud and clear?
Loud and clear, isn't it? Okay. Now then, the other thing we had asked you for from Patco was a drawing for the, uh, signs. Had you submitted that yet?
It was on the existing drawing.
Dimensional, it's not.
You didn't ask me for that, you just wanna know what the sign was. And it's out there, it's huge sign.
I know it is, cause I go by there all the time looking. I know exactly what's there. I see it almost daily or at least every other day. But I thought that when it, in our, in our, does it, what does it say? Have you read it recently, Gerard, about signs?
The original sign...
No, what our ordinance says about signs.
Understand, we've run through this before. And we met the requirements of the original sign back then, and it's the same sign, sign, hasn't changed.
CEO, what's your opinion on this?
The signs that are in the existing road, which one do you...
Okay. So you, in your opinion, the way it's drawn on the drawing is just fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your, your input. Okay.
Cause one of the questions I have is the chairman's, sir, um, what is your stormwater management plan for these new buildings and the, the, uh...
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't...
He can't hear you, Gerard.
What is your stormwater management plan, uh, for putting in these, these new structures?
It's, it's on the plan.
It's on the plan. It's on the plan, cause I looked at it.
So it's catch basin.
It's catch basins, additional catch basins.
And, uh...
And it's also the, uh, stone in the back for erosion control, that was not, that spot was really nice.
Now, there's gonna be new catch basins put...
Added. Added, no, 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 I'm sorry.
No, there's one catch basin that's exist, and we got a little detention pond, if you will, that collects it and...
Puts it into the existing system. To the big system, to the larger system.
Yes.
New catch basins going in.
Okay, no new catch basins. Other than the erosion control, rip rap in the back.
Correct.
And that's what, I, I was impressed by that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's an existing...
And you're outside the car lot, right? You're outside the, the soccer...
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, my... Left ear is plugged.
I apologize, sir. You're outside the car lot commission?
Oh, yes.
You're far out there.
Oh, yes, they are.
Great, great.
Yes, they are outside there.
And there's, uh, I notice you don't have any of butters, really.
No.
You've got the, uh, the gravel pit on one side and...
School bus, and that's about it.
Yeah.
Blade law, uh, whatever it is.
Whatever they are, and the church on the other side.
Yes.
And that's it, and they're not there but twice a week. Any other questions, guys? I'd like to...
That was a very detailed...
I have a very detailed drawing, I really, and that's one of the better drawings, maps, drawings that I've seen recently, come through here.
That Troy has played, the best I could.
Yes, yes, it does, and they detailed it.
He is, he's the engineer.
He's the engineer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you do the drawing, you have it done?
No, it's done by Sabato Technics.
That's what I thought.
I worked for Patco...
Yeah.
Fifteen years.
But you have your input to them when they put your drawing together.
Yeah, I reviewed it for Sabato Technics.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to determine the Patco Construction application is complete?
Do we have a second, Saban's second? All in favor at this time, please show a hand, right hand? I can't see all the way down there. Unanimous? So your application is complete, we're not done.
Okay.
We just make sure your application is complete, is all we're seeing.
Cause I was told I was gonna be first on the night. I didn't know I come on the old business.
Yeah, because you were here before.
I was.
Yes.
I was in Florida.
But it's old business for us.
You're still first, you're just not new business.
Yeah. Okay. Now then, do we have a motion from the board with everything we have in front of us to approve the application as submitted?
I think the only, uh, one of the biggest concerns I have, and I mentioned before, is lighting.
It's what?
The lighting on the buildings on, out, uh, just like they have right now.
It's on the outside, the building, they shine down to the ground.
They're gonna be directional for sure.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Because right now, your directional lighting is up there now, has a lens in the front, it shines out also.
Yeah.
So be careful when your new lighting you're gonna put up, we, if you put it directional, we, and I've seen them all different ways. Directional for down is down.
Yeah.
You can get them with different lenses, and you know that.
Yeah.
But so, that lens in the front, it shines so bright out on the street, maybe you don't want that light lens to be in the front part. Well, it looks like it does.
To be honest. It does, sir.
It does.
We're not, we're, we're not. Okay.
Just look at it. Would you look at it for us please?
I'm not going to argue.
Would you please look at it, that's all?
Definitely, I have to understand, sir.
Yep.
Lighting is in our ordinance.
Yep.
As, as well as uh, you know, noise abatement and stuff like that, so.
These are, these are called wall packs?
Wall packs, I'm fully aware of them.
No, I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with.
And they have lenses up, so if it's too bright, you turn them down.
But as Chairman Jackson.
Directional, down to the ground.
As Chairman Jackson pointed out, some of them were pointed towards the road. So when I'm coming home late at night on 25, and I go past there, you, you can't see for a few seconds. So it's like, if more of them go up where they're facing out towards the road, it starts to become a public health, safety risk and.
Okay.
De- my, my. So as long as they're just positioned down.
Down.
Yeah, that's all we're asking.
I'll let that, I'll let the president of Patco realize that, and he never is.
That, then that would be.
But those.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but. Those are the lights that exist now.
Right.
So the ones down back where we want to go are way down back.
Right. They won't, they won't affect that by the road then?
No.
No, but the ones in the front, you ought to have your, the, the, the CEO look into that.
I will.
If you would please. Okay, anybody, anything else Gerard? Anyone else?
Really, the lighting was, the stormwater and, and the fact that he's an engineer and uh, the fact that it's not in the corridor and uh, there's, there's really no abutters, it's all really industrial.
Right.
Um.
It's light industrial.
I don't, I didn't have any other issues other than the stormwater and the lighting and, and he, he seems more than happy to.
Right.
Offer the lighting to make sure it goes down.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I think prior to that, we need to schedule a public hearing, correct?
We don't have to schedule. It says we may, because Desiree looked that up for me.
Okay.
Am I correct, Desiree? It does not say we have to do a sidewalk. It says we may.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything on the sidewalk, it's just on the public hearing.
There's no real abutters anyway.
Huh?
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything on the sidewalk, but on public hearing, it says we may choose the whole public hearing.
Right. So there's no abutters in reality, so we're not going to have anyone there other than Patco. So I don't, maybe we don't need to do a.
The abutters were notified as when the application was um, submitted.
Who, the, the bus company and the church and all that, huh? I haven't looked at it recently, I'm not for sure anymore.
I sent, I sent letters to Parsons Field Properties, Steven Lomore, Spill's Marla, Lovejoy, Gerard, Yerba, Old Tor, and Boyard Millsy.
What, about five of them? Yeah. And we have not heard anything from any of them, not a word. Okay. What's the board's pleasure? Do you guys, anybody on the board think that we have, we have to, or we should do, I'll put it that way, a sidewalk?
Hearing, you mean?
Hearing.
Public hearing.
No, I didn't say, if we do a sidewalk, then we got to do a public hearing.
I'm kind of on the fence like Aaron. I, I, you know, I, I don't know if we should break the procedure, uh, I don't know.
I think I'd be fine with waiving a sidewalk, the public hearing piece of it, I mean.
And go ahead and approve the application? Okay. Okay.
So in other words, you're saying allow the, uh, make sure that the public is completely uh, involved, have the public hearing, but waive the sidewalk?
Correct.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Cause it does cover the base.
We got to have a motion, guys.
I, I would second what uh, Aaron is suggesting.
No sidewalk with a public hearing? All in favor, huh? Do I?
Who, who would show up at the public hearing? Do you have abutters, have a, and it's all like.
Well, it's just the point of following, making sure that we're doing our due diligence. Making sure.
Well, we got to see what's going to happen here when we vote. We got to see what happens when we vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand? Two. Opposed? Two. Motion fails. Any other motions from the board at this time?
I motion we approve.
Approve the application as submitted?
As submitted.
Okay.
And forego the sidewalk in lieu of the neighbors being light, in the neighborhood itself.
Right.
Not withhold the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Alright, second by Aaron. Show of hands. All approve, all that uh, agree with the motion as on the table, show of right hand please. Three. Oppose? Oh, one, four. Oh, okay, so we, we approved it. Your application's approved, sir.
Okay. I have one question. Do I get an official?
She will be sending you that letter. It will become from our great administrative assistant.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Let's go to item number seven please, new business.
Just do we mention it?
No, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Okay, I'm sorry. D. Item six, D. Site plan review Roger Monroe, 26 Reed Lane, map R19 lot 44, Automotive Repair Shop. Must be tabled at this time because this application has been taken to a higher level for review. We have no authority present whatsoever. So we got to table it. So, so moved by Aaron, second by Saban. All in favor, show a right hands. Unanimous. So that's tabled. Till we hear back. Alright, item number seven, new business. We don't have any new business, do we? Not any I know of. Cause uh, the CEO didn't give us any. Okay. Now, item number eight, open to public questions. The board, the floor is open at this time for anyone who wants to speak or address any questions to the board that you so desire. Yes, sir, come forward please. Anything?
Well, you know, I just write.
Yes, sir, we do.
There was a workshop, the um, a couple of weeks ago. It was rather a poor showing.
Yes, sir.
And um, I'd like that to be addressed to the board, that, that if you guys get, schedule a workshop, that people should show up.
They got to show.
More than two people.
I will.
On the board.
Yes. On the board.
Is this one another COVID exposure?
Yes.
No, this was the one after.
It was October the sixth.
Well, it's a good point, because even at the sidewalks.
Yes.
Me and Aaron, it was just, and unfortunately, I apologize, because I'm the one that uh, initiated the.
October sixth meeting.
Meeting and unfortunately, something came up, but I should have contacted the board, so.
Right.
Maybe we should communicate when we notice a sidewalk. Or we're having a workshop and uh, let uh, you know, the whole board know, you know, that we can't make it.
That's uh.
My bad on that one for the um.
Workshop.
Workshop, but um, the, I was shocked that at the sidewalks, it was just, uh, one sidewalk with just me and Aaron.
Well, I did inform Aaron, so you'll know Gerard, that I was going to be out of state.
Right.
And I asked him to be there to represent the board. I didn't know who else was going to show up. But I, I saw him, so I asked him to be there, and he said he would handle it. So I was out of state, but I need to probably send out that email so everybody knows if, if I'm not going to be around. I don't mind doing that.
No, and I think I emailed you.
Yeah.
My father-in-law.
He, and Saban lost a family member.
And I've attended every sidewalk since I've been here until.
Yeah, every other one. I've been at every one too, other than this one.
No, I understand. That's, that's, that's why I have the, I have family issues, so that's why I didn't show up for the workshops.
Right.
So maybe we replied, everybody, just rather than communicate to one person.
We need to.
We reply all.
We need to send in, here's what we probably should do. I'll see what the board says. Everybody that's not going to be at a scheduled meeting, workshop, board meeting, sidewalk, whatever. Yes, let me finish. I want you to send an email or, or a voice message to our lovely administrative assistant.